Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 6, 2015. Now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Local Access Programming. Is anyone here in the audience tonight recording? Seeing none, move on. Please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
My pleasure. The United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地，and justice for all. Thank you.
One quick matter of order here. We have a lack of quorum tonight, so there's a few items on the agenda which will not be heard. I'm sure members of the audience and the viewers at home are aware of that. Do you want to run through which ones are not going to be...
Sure. Through the chair, special permit for Hammerhead Lots, construction of two single-family homes and property located at 56 Packchuck Street. The item will be carried over to the next agenda due to the lack of quorum. Special permits need four affirmative votes at a minimum to be approved, so therefore it will be carried over to our next agenda on October 20th. And the other item on the agenda, due to lack of quorum, for special permit for Earthfill is for Gibson Road. This item will also be carried over to the October 20th agenda due to the lack of quorum.
Okay. Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is discussion with applicant William Padavano requesting a waiver of site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for a motor vehicle repair use on property located at 916 Southford Street. Would you come on up and...
Just make him and Larry aware of that.
Okay. Just give this one as well. Just to make you guys aware before you come in, because we have three members tonight, we need a unanimous vote in order to receive approval. Make you aware before we hear that that goes to the next application as well.
Okay.
So introduce yourself and explain us a little bit about what you want to do to the board.
My name is Bill Padavano and I want to open up a body shop on 916 Southford Street.
The property is currently in auto use, right?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the board seen the plan? Do you have any questions?
What waivers is he...
Almost all of them. You want to address it?
Through the chair, this is a waiver for the public hearing requirement for site plan approval. It's also to waive the following items from site plan, topography, lighting, landscape, designed by a professional engineer, and drainage. This being a previous repair shop. I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Do you...any idea how long the property's been vacant from the previous auto use?
I'm going to say less than six months.
And I know there's two structures on the property. You're looking at the structure that's attached to the restaurant that's in Oxford. And the structure in the back, it's a garage or something, would that also be used by the business?
No.
Okay. Is it owned by a separate entity?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a question on that too, is the...I rode by there and looked at it and how much of the pavement is intact around the building?
As far as I know, all of it. It goes around the whole building.
Out about how far?
In the front, approximately 20 feet. On the right side, looking at the building, 40 to 50 feet. And back, a good 40 to 50 feet, and then it goes around the plant blocks.
Did you have a concern, Jim?
Well, you know, when I looked at it, it looked...maybe it just needs to be swept, but it looked like there was a lot of dirt there. Didn't look like pavement. Other than that, there's no neighbors there, so other than the plant blocks.
It's all business, isn't it? Yeah, the whole area is business.
Other than that, did anybody from the town look it over?
Through the chair, Mr. Padavano's scheduled for DCG tomorrow for his license hearing, and the other town department's also weighing in on the project at that time.
And he's got to go through the fire department? Well, that's not to us, that's for sure. Other than that, I don't have issues with it.
Pause. Do you have any comments?
No. As long as it meets the requirements of the other departments.
Right. So the only question I had is, the plan doesn't really give us a whole lot of detail, but as far as the square footage of the building and the square footage then, its application towards the parking spaces. Typically, on two, we'd have a more engineered plan, something existing, and it would outline, you know, what the parking requirement was based upon the square footage of the building. Matty, can you address that as well?
Sure. Through the chair, it'd be in specific, the retail space within the building. So not...the parking requirements are 180 square feet per parking space plus the number of employees, but it doesn't account for the whole building, so most of it's for repair use, we're just talking about the retail area. Any idea, square footage of the retail area or the customer service area? Is there an office or some cash register?
There's...it's like two offices, it's half along between. I'm going to guess it's about...it's going to be 12 by...12 by 20. It's a good sized area, I was very surprised.
There's no cash register, there's no...mostly insurance repair type office.
Okay. When a customer walks in, coming through the front door, and is there a service area, is there a waiting room?
Just that one.
A waiting room.
Okay. That's the area.
You walk into a waiting room.
That's the customer service area we're asking about.
Sure. And that's that 12 by 20 area.
Okay. I mean, that's 24 square feet, well below the minimum requirement. You're showing eight spaces on the plan that are pre-existing, you actually see them striped in the aerial photography. That's more than enough spaces for, given that retail area, in my opinion. It would be beneficial, in my opinion, to this town planner, to see this on your drawing, showing the square footage area versus the parking calculations, to show that it has a minimum requirement, that may be something perhaps the board would be receptive to receive following tonight's meeting. It's definitely going to be beneficial for you to have that when you go in front of the board selecting for licenses. So having that plan modified to show the retail square footage area and the amount of minimum parking required, it's going to end up being like two or three spaces and you're showing eight. So just having that on the plan is going to be beneficial for you.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comments? Any public comment?
Going quick, I think that overview shows that it is tar and not sand. To answer your question, sir.
Aerials, probably.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was looking at it there. Yeah, that's what I think it is, we'll make sure we clean that up. Just looks like that whole area in front and on the right side a little bit, it just looked like it was just all dirt.
Through the chair, do you guys have any intention for the rest of this stuff on the lot, or is that part of the other business, the other building? Don't see a lot of trailers and stuff.
No. Everything's confined inside the building.
I would entertain a motion for waiver of the site plan approval with the condition that we discussed.
Seems like some of that stuff is spilling onto that other piece of property. Has nothing to do with him, but it has something to do with that business in the back.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so entertain a motion to do...
We need a motion for, to approve the waiver of the site plan approval and with the, and adjust the condition that we...
We talked about, I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. The condition being the submission after the fact of a plan that shows the square footage and the parking calculations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Mr. Padavano, tomorrow at DCG, we discuss this over the phone, that is at 10:00 AM tomorrow.
Where's that?
It's in this room.
10:00 AM. See you then.
Thank you.
So the...so the application for Patriot Homes is going to postpone, so we'll hear the application, applicant for the Herb Chambers Toyota of Auburn for a site plan modification.
May I, Mr. Schimmel? I just wanted to check that out, I think some folks came in late. 56 Packchuck Streets carried over to the next agenda, October 20th, and Gibson Road also, October 20th. Thank you.
Good evening.
So we need a, before we go in, a motion to open the public hearing.
Back a motion, reopen the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. So would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening.
And tell us a little bit about what you plan to do.
For the record, Lawrence Broder, I'm an attorney with Fletcher Tilton Worcester, and this is Mike Andrade from Graves Engineering. We represent Herb Chambers Toyota. Ian Portolucy, who's the general manager, may join us as we talk about this, I'm not certain, but he's supposed to be here. He does know that this is probably not going to, there's probably not a lot going to happen today. This is where we're here to talk about modification of the existing site plan for the dealership, specifically on the, on the existing building site, 805-809-Washington Street. This property's in an HB zone, the Act of the Three District. Plan that we're proposing calls for adding space to the existing building that houses the showroom, offices, and service. And that is the modification to the existing site plan. The current dealership's sales and service area specifically is going to be expanded per this proposal. There is a, there are requirements, the licensed dealers by Toyota corporate to provide certain number of service bays for service of automobiles at this point in time, which this dealership does not have and needs to provide. There are requirements of Toyota corporate to beef up their service area with amenities for those people who are coming in and having automobile service. Probably see them at dealerships now, you drive in and you meet the service person, the service rep and writes up the order. There's areas for waiting for service to be completed that are, that have been beefed up over a period of time. It's also going to expand the showroom area, but mostly it's a service up, it's a service and automobile, service base for automobiles and service areas, but areas for folks to sit in and the building footprint's going to expand per this proposal by about 16,000 square feet. And I might say before Mike goes over the plan that this has been worked on internally by this dealership for a better part of a year, trying to get a plan that would work on the site because of the restrictions that are on the site. We have, we have been to the Conservation Commission first because we wanted to make certain we could get an order of conditions that would be compatible with the plan that's being proposed and have had an order of conditions issued. And Mike will highlight a couple of things that will happen that are different, that will be different than presently as a consequence of getting that order of conditions. But I want to emphasize that this is, we have worked, worked with the fire department on turning radiuses to make sure trucks can get around the building and all that. That's been done previously, been with DCG, et cetera. We understand that this is going to be going out for peer review, we are not, unless Mike tells me differently, we don't know who that peer review engineering company is going to be at this point in time, so we know there won't be anything substantive really presented or reviewed, I guess, until that peer review is complete. But we wanted to come and at least give an overview. Mr. Portolucy from, was the general manager of the dealership.
How are you doing?
And so we won't, we know we can't do much other than give a brief overview of what's being proposed, but we wanted to get everything started and get the peer review underway so that we can come in in a reasonable period of time and have something to review.
Sure.
Mike, why don't you just hit the highlights?
Sure. I'll just, first I'll start with, you probably all already know the location, but we're talking about 805 and 809, with these two parcels here. The dealership building, you'll see shaded gray here, that's the existing dealership. And the parking spills over onto the second parcel, and took it a complex, as we call it. Includes these two parcels, also the parcel on 27 Appleton, which is a parking lot, mostly for, oh, entirely for display at this point. And a new parking lot that was constructed, finished construction last year, 33 Appleton, that's an employee parking lot. And more recently, the larger parcel on the corner of Prospect, Route 20 Prospect, that is also being used for inventory of vehicles at this time. So the work, the project we're talking about is on 805 and 809 here. For the site, the site is accessed primarily from Route 20, that won't change. This curb cut, we're not proposing really any improvements to that, and to repave it and replace the curb, which is a bit of this repair, is a secondary access off of Appleton Road here that will also be maintained. The building itself, and I have another view of this, it might be easier for everyone to see the change, if you can make this out from your seat. The existing building here is shown in gray. What's in green is the proposed addition. So you can see how basically that this back line, back line of the building here in this corner is being maintained, and it's squaring off the front, facing Route 20, and the primary addition is on the west side. This is almost entirely all service area, doubling the amount of service bays they have now, that's a requirement of Toyota license. Here is the customer drive-in entrance that Mr. Broder mentioned, so customers will drive in and be met by a service representative here, and then into the new waiting room. It's inside the building, beyond the expansion, the showroom, offices, both the first and the half-second story, that'll all be renovated as well. Brand-new, basically a brand-new building. So this is what the building will look like, that's the architect's rendering. So right now, I'm going to go back to this for a second, I'm sorry. Right now, if you visited the site, it may be hard to see on here, the existing pavement is in these red lines here. So we worked hard to try and keep the expansion of new paved areas to the minimum on the site. And one, we're limited by area for one, and two, we're right up against a couple wetlands on both sides. So this addition, you'll notice, has a champer in the back, that was necessary for us to be able to get our access drive around for fire trucks. There's a retaining wall that's proposed here. So this is new pavement, this little piece here, the retaining wall. There's an existing small parking area that's being removed, propane tanks that are located in there will be relocated. So really, the only new work that's outside the existing footprint is in this corner and a bit over here, where we're actually taking out parking spaces and removing parking spaces here. So the physical dimensions of the project are basically the same with the exception of this corner. A lot of this down here on this side of the building, east side of the building, this existing edge of pavement is going to remain, all along the front's going to remain, this parking lot's all going to remain. The parking, parking areas and spaces are being entirely redone, I'll explain that in a second. So just going back to the site plan, so this building will have a new entrance plaza, some displaying vehicles up front, customer parking, all in front of the building, service parking on the side, service parking on this side, new dumpster pad, and tire storage area on this side, again, all within the existing limits of pavement. We've got snow storage, snow storage area shown, some of the corners of the parking. The parking...as I mentioned, the Toyota facility has these, the Appleton Road, 33 Appleton Road site and the 20 Prospect, which they're using for inventory and employee parking. So part of this project is kind of reshuffling around some of the parking spaces on the existing site. Many of these spaces, especially on this side and over here, are all displayed, those will be shifted to Prospect Street site. So all the parking that's required by the zoning bylaw, that's for customer service and employee parking, are all provided on this parcel and on the 33 Appleton, which is connected by a pedestrian bridge, it's already constructed. So all the parking required by zoning is here, what's left, you have some display all along the front of Route 20 here, and it's a little bit of inventory in this lot here, and the rest is, as I said, employee service and customer parking. So this parking layout is almost entirely reconfigured, and what it ends up with, existing on this site, they have about 400 spaces, but this reconfiguration and the building expansion, they're losing about 150 spaces or so. Those are being shifted, either lost or shifted to inventory in 20 Prospect, to provide a better, again, a better flow through the site and access for the public.
Don't you have storage across the street over here, too?
This is used by Hyundai mostly.
Hyundai?
Yes.
Different company?
Yeah.
Probably a different company.
The Hyundai dealership that I mentioned is directly across the street, this is their prototype here. You're right, they do utilize that parking lot, Hyundai does, for storage. So again, access point's the same, we've gone over the parking. As far as degrading, not a whole lot is going to change, other than the need for this retaining wall on the west side, because that slope's up now, we'll be cutting into that slope, so it's necessary to do. This is a short retaining wall, it's only, I think, at the highest five or six feet tall. Utilities, we're maintaining the existing utilities to the site, that's water, sewer, electric, it's not being changed. Part of discussions with the fire department is they wanted to see another hydrant on the site, so we'll be adding one here at the corner, kind of next to the Appleton, the parking lot in the corner of Appleton and also the building, so there's now two hydrants on the site, existing one here, proposed one here, and then that was a request of the fire department. Drainage, we have to manage this new parking area repeating here, and I should back up the, this project in its entirety only results in an increase in impervious of about 970 square feet, so it's, that's only about a half a percent of the entire property on the site, it's relatively small. But nonetheless, we still need to treat and attenuate the runoff from this portion and the building addition. So we're putting in some new drainage here, catch basins, manholes, a small underground infiltration system, that all overflows to the existing drainage system which goes off the sheet here to a surface basin, to the east of the site, between the Prospect Street site. So that's the utilities. Landscaping, there's not a whole lot there now, we're going to be cleaning up around the building, obviously this will be all new landscaping, the plaza, and any areas that we can do additional landscaping, we are, along the side, along the east side of the parking areas. As part of the order of conditions from Concom, we agreed to cut back some of these parking spaces, as I mentioned before. Those areas that are presently impervious will be renaturalized, they're not wetlands, but we will plant them with like materials, that's in keeping with their buffer zone requirements. And in addition to that, we are replicating some wetland, even though we aren't filling any, and that'll also be done in this area too. So again, all this area right now is currently impervious. I think that's the major points, certainly if anyone has any more questions or wants me to go over anything more in detail.
I think, you know, I think in a situation like this, I don't really think, you know, until we get the peer review on, on the project, which I'm sure we're going to request a peer review, I don't really think that, you know, we can go over each item as it comes in from the peer review and your answer to it, on every, on every aspect of this. So basically, it looks good, but again...
It's really what we expected, your response to it. Our thinking was, we had the scheduled time, we should take advantage of coming in, give you an overview, we understand there's not going to be any substantive review tonight, we understand there's going to be a peer review, we're waiting to hear what the status of that is so we can get going, and we'd be anxious to come back at the earliest possible time and give the complete.
The only question I think I have before we start down that route is, the adjacent property, 20 Prospect, you previously approved a site plan application for that property, I think for a service bay, is that right? So is that going to be abandoned? Or is that...
On the hill, we're packing...
Well, we left a space there which might have been, been able to become a service facility, but Toyota says no.
Okay.
It's got to be, it's got to be with the building.
All right.
So again, to go back, this is, we've been working with this for quite a long time to satisfy Toyota, this is, they have certain insistences that we have to...
Like all dealerships, like all manufacturers.
So are the modifications to that have to be...
Does, after the chair, is it the intention of Herb Chambers to file a modification to complete the stormwater system with 20 Prospect after this is all complete? I can just, that, that project was designed and approved in two phases.
Right.
Each phase stands alone.
Right.
The second phase just won't be constructed. The second phase was, was basically dropping a building on that middle tier.
Okay.
So that phase, at this point, is not going to be constructed.
Through the chair, it may be beneficial to submit an ASB for that at a later time.
Well, that's, there's a few remaining construction items that are being finished up, mostly the line scraping Route 20, once that's done, we will be preparing an ASB for that.
Okay. Couple members of the public here, do you guys have any comment?
Not at this point, I don't think.
No.
Well, I guess my only comment is...
Before you start, through the chair, I just apologize, this is for the folks at home, just state your name and your address before, if you have any comments.
Helen of Ballforia, 35 Appleton.
Thank you.
Sure you have neighbors for their parking lot here, I'm assuming?
Yes. Yes, and they're very, very good neighbors, yes.
Do they do what they said they were going to do? Can defend something worth, yeah, I thought they would, yeah.
They did a lot of job.
Okay, very good.
I guess our only concern is to maintain the, the flow of the natural runoff that comes down the hill. Years passed, and I know this is a long time back, and it can vary from year to year, when the, when the first parking lot in the corner of Appleton and Route 20 was built, something happened to that flow that backs, backed a lot of water up onto the adjacent properties. It hasn't been bad in, in the past few years, I don't think.
You did the mowing back there. You got the new lawn mower, I don't get to play.
I guess that, that's probably our main concern, is that that gets looked at to make sure that, that natural flow keeps up.
Where were you having the trouble, in the back of the lot over here?
Way in the back, yeah.
Over here, yeah.
There's a, several little rivers, streams, whatever you, and they, they last about a couple weeks.
I just want to add Mr. Cory's comment, is, we went through this when we did the 27 Appleton parcel, and the neighbors brought up this, apparently been a historic problem of a lot of water in their backyard, there is a stream there, it's intermittent, there's wetlands that run almost entirely up the, the back of their property lines, so I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if some of those lots were at one point wetlands themselves, but this project on its own, again, all the drainage goes the other direction, it goes towards the other stream, which is on this side of the property. So it doesn't, this project doesn't have any impact on that watershed, if you will.
It probably won't, but you have a good check, you know, especially in the spring when things are melting and at the end of Athens Street, it gets to be a raging river.
What they're doing here, man, okay, what they're doing here would have no bearing on the water flow going behind your house. This is strictly a modification to increase the size of that one building. Nothing would change as far as water flow coming from a higher area down to a lower area.
We tend to agree with that, just as long as it's kept in mind, that's all.
Now, aren't you increasing the area in here where, by removing some of the pavement in that area so that that is going to be actually a bigger repository for water?
Some of the wetland replication area.
With a replication area?
Yeah. I'll go back to this plan again for a second because you can really...
You said you were taking some of the parking out of there to make that area bigger, hold more water.
That is true. So again, the existing edge of pavement is, if you can see that, is this red line here. So where, this is new pavement and retaining wall, what was pavement here now, this will be dug out and that'll be a wetland replication area. So it's a bit more storage, it's not a whole lot. This is all lower, so any runoff that hits this parking is going to the drainage system in that way, not out to that stream. All right, Mike, I think it's always good for you to hear any neighborhood issues out there before it goes through peer review and gets started, so appreciate that.
They did a good job with the other ones, both places, they've worked with the neighbors.
Absolutely. So it looks like the project is likely going through peer review. Do we have quotes?
We do, through the chair, I have three quotes in, one from VHB, another from Bowler Engineering, another from Lennart Engineering. Low bid came in at $3,450 from Lennart Engineering. Next quote from Bowler Engineering was at $6,500, and VHB was at $7,800. Lennart Engineering hadn't done a peer review for us yet, I understand that, one of their chief engineers has been working for a long time, Mr. Ken Hodgson at Culloden Engineering over the years. I personally would be okay if they were to do the review, but it's the applicant's consent as well.
Yeah, I don't, I have an egyptian to that, I'd say, you know, Ken, when he worked for Culloden, probably, I think, worked on the original dealership, they designed that back in the mid-'90s, so probably has some knowledge of the site already.
So town's recommendation would be Lennart, you guys would agree with that? Would it prove it?
I...
Do we need a motion for that?
Sure.
Motion to...
Make a motion, yes, and a peer review, too.
Lennart Engineering.
Lennart Engineering.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to continue? Fire, motion to continue?
I make a motion to continue.
Do we need a date? Yeah, and it's up to the APK, I mean, October 20th is our next meeting, it's two weeks from today.
That's not practically possible.
That would appear in the...
We haven't set our November meeting schedule yet. We were considering second Tuesdays of each month, we only meet once a month, November and December. You guys want to stay on the second Tuesdays?
We'll meet on Sunday at a rumba or something. Up for that.
Second Tuesday in November is November 10th. If the motion to continue is on November 10th.
Then you're running into Thanksgiving. I would say second Tuesday in November, because that's our schedule usually anyway.
Yeah.
So do that and just eliminate the 24th and we'll all go to a rumba.
So motion, second, you guys have a date? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And good luck with that.
Thank you. Continue.
Business friendly now.
Yes, a continuing.
Nice to see you.
You got my note?
Yes.
Will you take the bottom please?
I thought that was our...
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you, guys. So the next APK is the Town of Auburn requesting an amendment to the zoning, Auburn's zoning bylaw. This relates to the moratorium for registered marijuana dispensers. Motion to open the hearing.
Make the motion open here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Turn it over, you men.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is for, obviously, the board's been working on our draft marijuana bylaw, but since we're going to continue to work on it, given a lot of the information we've been receiving, town manager and I recommended that we put a, or produce a moratorium for, to disallow these sort of facilities for a period of year while we continue to work on the bylaw. If the moratorium's implemented or the board approves a moratorium tonight, this would prevent any of these facilities from coming in town at all, regardless of the zoning that we're preferring in the zoning bylaw. This would have to be closed and voted on tonight in order to make it on to the town meeting on October 27th. The draft, I believe, we've already presented, we've actually been, had an opportunity to look at this already since it kind of came from us and had to go back, so if anyone had any comments on it, let me know, I can amend as necessary if necessary.
All right, so what's coming up before town meeting is a proposal to extend it for a year.
Yep, to prohibit the, those businesses from town for a year, up working above.
Which gives us plenty of time, I think, to look into the other issues that are out there.
Well, the other issues are, first of all, wacky weed's illegal.
Right, yeah, well, I think...
Well, I think the easiest thing to do is to close the hearing and take a vote on the moratorium, that's what I think the easiest thing to do.
Sure, I would agree. So motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then motion to, what's the wording on that?
Just a motion, whether to recommend to the town meeting.
Okay.
I make a motion to recommend to the town meeting that we put a moratorium on the dispensary of marijuana in the Town of Auburn for one year.
Second call.
Are we giving them a reason for it?
To continue to work on the draft bylaw.
Okay, and a reason to continue to work on it?
Although the state has, I understand, I'm not even, you have your concerns about federal state regulation, but the state has...
I have information that says that it's totally illegal.
Right, our reason for this, in any event, is to be able to regulate it regardless, so if we don't have a bylaw, we can't.
So in other words, when this comes back, when this comes back, okay, half of the year is up and this comes back, then we can enter into discussions at length.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, and any applicant would have to come to us for approval.
I need four votes.
Yes. So nothing that happens here dictates any of that, it just gives us more time to figure out what's going on, so...
Because if you look at the use of marijuana, Vermont is number one in the country per capita. Rhode Island is second. Guess who's third?
All the more reason to be here and...
Massachusetts is third and Colorado follows us. There's more wacky weed in Massachusetts than Colorado. And Colorado's just...
Do you want to second the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. The APK welcome home has been continued to 10/2015. So the next item on the agenda, town meeting, October 27th, do you want to know? Is that just a notice?
Yeah, that's just to keep us advised on the town meeting date. We have two articles on, it's the moratorium, thanks to the vote of the board tonight, and the alternative members, or alternate members.
Yes, what do we got for alternate, one or two?
One. And meetings like tonight, I think are just more...
Yeah, absolutely.
No question, I don't have a problem with that alternate, you know. And they did, by the way, approve on a one-year trial basis, the video conferencing.
I don't think they voted approve, I think they carried over to the next agenda. I know there was a lot of discussion about it.
It looks like...
Yeah, it looks like that's kind of...
It looks like it's going to be, it looks like it's going to be approved. But anyway, that, we'll see what happens.
Okay. So the Village District site visit with CMRPC, it's, you have meetings at...
Saturday, October 17th, 10:30, you would be meeting at the library. This is with CMRPC to go over the Village District.
Is there any way you can move that to the early afternoon? Are you guys planning on attending that?
What is it?
The 17th.
The old site.
I have a meeting from 10 to 12.
Now, are all of the people involved in that district invited to this meeting?
This is just between us and CMRPC, preliminary discussions to see what areas and what areas of focus.
There was areas that we could have had done 10 years ago for nothing.
Such as, you know, mixed-use development for the giant parking lot in front of Service Park, things like that, so...
And then there would be at some point in the future a meeting in which a wider audience would, I'm sure, be invited, right? Okay.
And so on the 17th?
That doesn't require a vote or anything like that?
No, no, that's just, that's scheduled.
Okay. Annual open meeting training, October 21st at 6:00 PM, assume that's just a...
Something that happens every year, it's a refresher on open meeting law with the board, it's with attorney heading it, it's here at Town Hall on the 21st.
Okay. We covered the November meeting, and my thought would be to wait on deciding in December 1 until November, so we have more members of the board here.
Sure.
And likely we just, likely just continue with the first scheduled meeting of the month anyways, but, okay. Draft bylaw, registered, is that, I assume that's just to keep it on...
Yes, exactly, we know what dates right now, it's a lot more times and stuff.
51 Faith Avenue, signatures?
Yes, this was, we can only get two folks to sign today, this would be John and Paul. And still have to obtain Wendy and Ron's signatures a later day.
You still want today's date?
Yes.
And then minutes, I assume was, so same thing there?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Were you here?
Yeah, we had to table it. Yeah, because you weren't here.
I wasn't here?
No.
You're going to need somebody else to...
Yeah, we'll have to carry on.
Why don't we table that to the next one?
We're waiting on the beach.
Do you want to talk quickly about the CPTC fall workshops?
Yes, before I even get into it, is anyone interested to attend any workshops throughout the state on certain planning stuff?
I went to the last ones.
Yeah, there's certain subjects, master plans, 40B housing, things like that, is anyone interested in that stuff?
I think one thing should...
I was going to say Ron.
This would be quite a replenishment for my show.
Yes.
I'll be a few of them, but it's one of the options.
Well, sure will, take a hard look at it, do our best to attend. All right, next meeting, October 20th, 2015, and motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.